Yeah.
Yep, you remember, that's why.
Are we going up that club?
This clock.
This is the clock we started at.
I thought it was battery and it's still running slow, so I don't know. This is dollar short clock, this is dollar short clock. Hi, Emily.
Hey.
You're right next to me.
Very full, I think we're all here.
Yep.
So I'm gonna call this meeting to an end, uh, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where all which stands on our nation. So, everyone should have a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any proposed changes or amendments? Okay. Here, hang on.
I'm, I moved to adopt the agenda.
So we have a motion, again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comments.
Oh.
Love it, love it, it's the summer. So here's the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to make to adopt the consent agenda?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
I'm, well, there's go, go.
Ask for questions, guys.
Questions? Yeah.
No.
Those are all those renewals of stuff we've been doing, correct?
Correct. Yes, they're all renewed.
Okay. Okay. So no discussion or questions, so all those in favor?
Advisory vote?
Do you guys have any questions about the agenda?
Yes, I'm even.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Who's this?
I can.
No.
Okay. Um, also, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, motion carries, so now we're down to reports. And we'll start with the students' spring survey.
I'm gonna pop those down, it's just a closer up of one of the slides. On two sides. Alright, well, thank you, we're gonna take just a few minutes and talk a little bit about our spring student and family surveys. Um, one of the reasons that we have put these surveys in place is because we value the voice of our families and our students, and we wanna know what, how they are experiencing the product of education that we're putting out. And so this time of year, we like to share with you what some of the highlights were for, from these surveys. Um, the, the surveys are put together to do a couple of things, get that voice, and also kind of specifically ask our families and our students how we're doing on some of our strategic planned goal areas. Um, and the student survey also, uh, asked some questions about, uh, students assessing how they feel they're doing with different social emotional learning skills. So on our family survey this spring, um, just a couple of quick highlights. We had, um, really strong favorable ratings for several things that I mentioned here. Um, both the questions that ask about, do you feel like staff show respect to students? And the question about, do you feel that students are showing respect to staff? Had really high favorable ratings again, so that's good to know that our families are feeling that. Um, our scores for school safety are still strong, but they dipped a little bit when compared to spring two thousand twenty-four. Um, and our families really had a lot of positive comments about our district and school communication. We asked a lot of questions about the remind app and preferences about communication, and the, the answers were very positive. One of the things that we really like to look at is in the family survey, and the student survey as well, but in the family survey, there's kind of an open-ended comment section, just where they can write in whatever they wanna share with us, any other feedback they have for us. And the panorama product will theme that and, and give us like a word cloud of what the, the most commonly used word was. And it was gracias, um, this year, which is really awesome, that primarily those comments and feedback were really positive. There's some other things they'd like us to keep our eye on, um, namely, end of school pickup and, uh, you know, crossing guards. This is not a surprise, there were some things there that they'd like us to look at. But that came in second to gracias as the most said thing, so that's wonderful to know. So switching over to our student survey, what I'm gonna do to keep things short is, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about what some of the most positively rated things were on our student survey, what some of the less positively rated things were on our survey, and which things made some big gains. And then we'll drill down into just five or six specific questions that we've been watching a little closer and look at how that has changed over time. So starting out with the things that were most positively rated on the grades four through five survey. Um, once again, supportive relationships came out as our most positively rated item, which we're super proud of. Um, in fact, ninety-one percent positive rating on that, which is really great. Um, it even went up a little bit from fall of one point. Uh, self-management, students in grades four and five, uh, assessing their own ability to manage themselves, um, also was pretty strong, so that's wonderful that they're feeling confident about that, and that went up a little bit from fall as well. In grades six through twelve, supportive relationships, again, the highest one, super happy about that. And then, um, there, the second most positively rated one was cultural awareness at the secondary level. Okay, making one. So for the ones that were more least, that were the least positively rated, in grades four through five, school safety is one of the least positively rated ones. Um, but overall, things were rated very positively at elementary, so even though it's one of the least positively rated ones, it's still more than half of the students that are rating that in the top two of five choices of how positive they could rate that item.
Does, does that vary much between different schools?
Uh, you know, we have, I have, I can get you that, I didn't include it in the report. Um, uh, but we can, I can definitely get it for you.
And, and the question, you know, quite, correct me if I'm wrong, only it asks, how often do you, do you worry about school?
Yeah. And we're, we're actually gonna look at it in another slide, exactly that. We'll, we'll dig into that, school safety just a little bit, no, that's a good question, you know, what exactly might that mean? And so we'll look at the specific questions in there, in another slide. Um, and then the other thing that, um, was still lower is self-efficacy and challenging fe- feelings. And you may remember, um, self-efficacy, we talked about last year being an area of concern. So it, it is super important, and it's their ability to believe that they really can learn and be able to stick with and succeed in school. Um, and we've done some work on that, that I'm gonna talk about later on in the, in the presentation. For grades six through twelve, school belonging, um, and, uh, was lower rated, and then self-efficacy, once again, was one of our, our, um, least positive items, and those are all things that we're working on. Alright, so now we'll look at what came up. So you will recall from the last slide that self-efficacy was one of the lower ones, but the good news is, it's one of the ones that made a biggest increase at elementary. Um, they came up five points in self-efficacy. And another item that was rated five points higher in spring than it was in fall is, um, school rigorous expectations. Um, the question for that one says something like, does the work I do in school make me really think? Do I have to really think to complete this work? Um, grades six, six through twelve, even though we saw on an earlier slide that school safety wasn't one of our highest pieces, it came up nine points at grades six through twelve, this, from fall to spring. So it's definitely going the right direction, and, um, the other thing that came up for them was diversity and inclusion. Go ahead and go on. So looking now at some more really specific questions. Uh, we talked earlier about the supportive relationships. The specific question there is, do you have a teacher or other adult from school that you can count on? And on the left, you see the fall scores, and on the right, you see the spring scores for that same question. Um, the top row is grades four or five, and the bottom row is grades six through twelve. And so that's a real celebration that we still have a high percentage of our students reporting a supportive relationship, so we're happy that that, that's a, a question we keep an eye, close eye on, and it's still doing well. Um, go ahead. So the next one is, there's a question that says, during the past week, how often did you feel safe? And, um, as you can see, out of the five choices that they have, we've definitely got the majority of our students down here in the green feeling mostly safe. So the celebration there is, even though this isn't the highest rated of all of our items, there's still a large chunk of our students that are feeling safe at school, and that we saw some increases in that. From fall to spring. Um, here's another question about school safety, this one said, how often do you worry about violence at your school? And, um, so you, this one, it looks like it's backwards because it's a good thing to almost never worry about violence at school, right? So the numbers up on the top are more positive, so the green always means the most positive. And, um, so, you know, the, the, the summary here is, even though students report that they mostly feel safe at school, they still worry about school violence, which, you know, we've talked about that before, that's, that's part of today's world, that even though you may be in a place that you feel is relatively safe, um, thinking about school violence is probably something that's a reality for all of us that are in schools daily. Do you wanna add to that? Anything, or?
No, no, I just, I just think that's something that's, it's in the media, it's, you think about, it's something we practice, we drill on it.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, students have, you know, reported that, that they feel anxious about
Yeah.
violence in schools, even if it's not happening in schools, it's still still, um, you know, it's a shadow that's out there for sure.
Yeah, and, and it is also true that, you know, we're doing drills, we're doing things like the school, active school shooter training, and there's, there's, um, we feel that makes you more prepared in the event of having a problem, however, it does also bring it to your mind more. So, you know, doing those trainings also brings it up to your mind that you may be thinking about it. Um, for school belonging, it just outlet asks is, how well do you feel like you belong at your school? And belong can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Um, but that's the, the generalization of that question, just how well do you feel like you belong? Um, and so the nice thing on this is that grades six through twelve increased from fall to spring. Um, four or five stayed consistent, but they were already pretty high. Uh, so that's something we've been really looking at, school belonging, and trying to find all these different activities and ways that our secondary students can feel more connected. Um, and so we're happy to see that increase. You have any questions or thoughts on that, anybody, ever, student reps or anything, you have any thoughts or questions about that? That's okay, I just, I checked.
Well, I guess, yeah, that would be a question, is there anything in particular that you can pinpoint that said, oh, that be, that really did make a difference in making the students feel, uh, belonging?
It's, it's a big shift.
Perspective, cuz that is a really big shift, so what, what do you think the school was doing right?
You know, there's a lot of other things we were doing, like, by weeks, and all that.
You guys are very busy in your leadership group this year.
Yeah, well, leadership group did so much good work. There were, uh, there was a nice increase in the number of students turning out for sports too, and I, I would guess that if you're turning out for a sport, you probably feel more like you belong.
Sure.
So that's probably helpful.
And we have record numbers in our band, choir program.
And theater.
Theater program.
Yeah.
Like, we have also ways to incorporate, I think also think we're built on the, like, idea that sports are important thing. You know, recently, we've focused on control and other aspects.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
A lot of students feel like we give that more attention as well as not just the sports.
Yeah.
Kind of, that it's students for the number.
For sure. Yeah.
I can say a community game.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, um, I, I wonder if just trying to highlight the many different ways you can belong is a part of the increase. That there's lots of ways, it doesn't have to be just one way. Yeah. Alright, um, you can go ahead and go to the next one. So, um, there's a section that's called grit, but the question I wanted to highlight is, overall, how often do you believe you can reach your future goals? And, um, so we've been doing a lot of work around hope, I shared a little bit about that in an earlier report this year. Um, and we know that students' own belief, their self-efficacy, their own belief that they can reach their goals, has a big, big difference in their ability to keep persevering to get to a goal, cuz if you don't believe you can ever do it, why try? Right? Um, so this is something we've been really watching and really, really glad to see from fall to spring, it increased in both elementary and secondary. And to me, that means that our hope initiatives are working and we are nurturing hope, so I'm super thankful to see that increase as well. Um, the next question is the one in the self-efficacy quest, uh, section, says, how sure are you that you can learn all the topics taught in your classes? So it's kind of asking about that confidence in your ability, academic ability. Um, and that also increased, so we're super thankful for those numbers, um, to be going up. I wanted to just take a second and talk about one thing that we've been working on this year, our, um, uh, social emotional learning, um, leadership team did a book study on the School of Hope, and it's all about this idea of nurturing, um, that self-efficacy, um, helping students find pathways to their goals and helping them with the confidence that they can reach them. And we did that with the SEL, uh, leadership team, but then it, it, uh, was popular and spread to many of the millings, I think four and five elementary schools did it. The high school started one, and I had a few QIA people that were a part of it too. So, um, the teachers are finding practical strategies for how to continue, um, to support students' self-efficacy and to help them find pathways, help them do goal setting, and at an earlier report, we, we looked at like one example of a tool from that. Um, but I hope that maybe some of that work and that learning has been a part of helping those scores come up from fall to spring this year in that critical area. So the next thing I have here is what we call a heat map, and I gave you a hard copy of this. Um, what this does is it helps us kind of see if there's differences in the responses from certain subgroups of students. And in this particular case, um, this first slide is grades three through five, so one of your slides has grades three through five, or one of your slides has grades three through five, and then if you flip it over, the other side has six through twelve. And I just gave you a copy cuz it's so tiny and hard to see. But even if you don't see every little number, you can kind of just look at the colors. The darker green that a box is, the more positively that thing was rated for that group. The more dark of orange, the less positively it was rated for that when compared to the group of all students. Okay? So we can see that in the group of multilingual students, um, we have a lot more orange in that row, and in the group that's not multilingual students, we have a lot more green. So that gives us a little heads up that our students who are multilingual are experiencing at our schools less positively than our students who are not, so something for our schools and buildings to look at. Um, student special education status, our students that have disabilities and are served with individual education plans through special education. Um, it's kind of a mixed bag in grades three and five. Um, but there are a couple of really, um, concerning areas that are quite a bit less positively rated. Um, female, male was mixed, depending on the school and the grade. Um, it wasn't like a, a clear one group having a very different experience. Um, in some schools, there were bigger differences than others. So the, on the other side, you have the same information, but for secondary, for grades six through twelve. And here, you'll notice that as our students with disabilities go past fourth, fifth grade into the secondary school, we have a much different, um, perception, they're, they're reporting way less positively than those students who aren't. And again, with our multilingual students, there's definitely a gap there, a disproportionality about, um, that, seeing that, um, their experience is not rated as positively. Um, and then again, with the female, male, it's kind of flipped depending on the particular, um, item. So there's just a little bit of both. And, and, um, that heat map just kind of helps groups. And each school gets this, this is the district-wide information, but each school gets this for their own specific school. And then they can look at that information and think about if there's anything in particular they can problem solve and think about that might help those groups have a more positive experience. Um, so the way that we work with this data, um, our D-Lit looked over this district-wide, um, data in May. Each school reviews this with their building leadership team, their school improvement team, and parent groups. And then the schools use this information to decide on some potential goal areas for improvement in their annual school improvement plans. Um, and many of them are using this data as their measurement about whether or not they make improvement in, in a certain goal area. Um, many schools did have a goal last year of improving, uh, our self-efficacy scores on this, and so it's awesome to see that many schools did those activities and did see above in that area. And that is it, to give a high-level overview, if you would like to see, that we can get, um, each school can get individual results of all of these same things by their school. But I, another thing that I have is like that heat map version, but instead of by subgroup, it's by school. So if that's something the board would like to see, I can share that. And is that really what you kind of want, or what, what were, is that just to kind of see?
Yep.
Yeah.
Sure. We're saying that on Friday as far as the.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Would it be possible to also get like the, the school level, or maybe it could be at a district level, like those kind of ideas that they generated from?
Oh, the comments? Yeah, I mean, uh, we can look at that, there's quite a few comments we do have downloaded to a spreadsheet, some are translated and, and some are not. I, we, so, for the student or for the family?
The D-Lit, you said that there was a team that reviewed the data. And I think they had a few ideas or?
The dealer reviewed it, and then their individual buildings will review and make building decisions based on that.
We will see that come up, Deanna, though, is when we do the school improvement plans, and their whole of safety belonging. This is one thing that they use. Um, and in some of their buildings, they really, like, the high school, they're really going in on using, you know, tell us more about this one particular such section, like, uh, in an essay, or really open-ended, so we can really understand. Because some of the, there's so many, the questions are, are, are great, but you have to ask a lot of questions about the question. So then the high school will then take that step further, and then run it through AI, and then start to theme it. Um, and I think that the really intentional work that you saw, uh, secondary, I think is some of that, that pulling layers back, you know, they get that one quantitative measure, and then they're using qualitative results to really drill down to, but.
Cuz it's meant to be kind of an overall screener to get an idea in these big, broad areas. Is this an area we need to devote more attention, time, and focus on? Or is it going okay? Is it getting better? Is it getting worse? And for large groups, are there groups that are experiencing it differently that we need to be aware of? Then the real problem solving happens in those school improvement teams when they build an action plan based on that information. You know, about the what do we do about it piece.
When that, when that survey's administered, is it, I mean, accounting for many variables as possible, so it's like the same type of day for the same groups?
Pretty close, um, it's within five days, a five-day window. Um, secondary is a little.
Same time of day, like, I mean, they're taking it.
No, it varies a little bit that way.
Especially with the elementary window, for the teachers can fit it into the schedule.
Yeah.
So you can see some.
And the elementary window was a little bit, uh, different from the secondary window because of when they, they take it through advisory, so it needed to fit the schedule of when there was an open time in advisory to take it.
Secondary is a little bit more consistent, cuz it does take place in their advisory classrooms, so that's the same time, um, with the same teacher.
Or at least, at least it's, the QIA kids all took it at sort of the same time, the middle school kids took it at sort of the same time, and the high school kids, but they weren't all three at the exact same time.
Well, yeah, I just wondered.
They were the same week.
Between like fall and spring, if you compare those, like.
Yes, there's a window.
Kids taking them all like before lunch and hungry, or they taking after lunch, full bellies and happy?
Yeah.
Especially for the younger.
Yeah, we have not dug down that closely into it, yeah.
I would say elementary is much more inconsistent than secondary. Because it really is up to the whole teacher making.
Yeah. And then in, when it's just fourth and fifth grade in elementary, there's smaller numbers too, so it's some, some schools, that's just two teachers, so, you know, so it, they just work together to, to get it done during that week.
And we already explored bringing it down to third grade too, to see how we maybe assess those third graders in an appropriate way. Um, you know, age appropriate way for them, cuz we really wanna hear their experience too.
The other thing we talked about on the SEL leadership team is how, you know, this kind of quantitative Likert scale five-point survey may not be the best way to get information from younger kids, but we could have a classroom meeting, and the teacher could ask for general input and opinions and do a little scripting of some ideas. It's not the same as this kind of an anonymous survey, but it may be more appropriate to get voice from kindergarten through third, second or third grade students. So, um, you know, there's definitely some other ways that we could get their, their thoughts without it, without them doing this survey that maybe isn't quite developmentally the right way for them. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I have a gentleman in front of me, um, so next. We have, of course, it's what I wanna comment, sorry, uh, the graduation written report, so it is available, um. I'm guessing when it's a ready report, we just.
Just if you have any questions you can ask, or we're here, or if you have any questions beyond this, you can let me know, and, um, I can, I can answer this visually too.
Not that you've got the chance to review it, but, um, it's pretty cool to think that a hundred and fifty-five were able to walk, right? Now the number's safe.
We were able to graduate.
Uh, sorry, that's just QHS, and QIA is also included, which would be plus thirty-four.
Yep, yeah, yep. Yeah.
And thank you, Casey, for attending, it was a hot, it was a great day.
Yeah.
And congrats to our own graduations. Any more questions? Okay, uh, next is the student committee report.
Sure. How about new items? Um, so since we've last met, we finished the school year up, had a really nice finish to the year, just again, thank you to students, families, staff, um, it really was a great year. Um, since then, we've still been very busy here in district office and in schools, closing out the school year. It's kind of sad, everything's coming down except for Ailey, if you still wanna go visit Ailey, we have some school going strong and displays are still up and still looks like an elementary school, but it's looking pretty institutional right now. It's always, I'm always sad when the school's ending, I ran a kid today, uh, across from Fernando's, I asked if they wanted an earlier start, they said no. Really happy with the twenty-seven, so, um, we had our admin retreat last Friday, really great, um, opportunity to add them, really, you know, gain a room. We spent a good deal of the time reflecting on data as we're, as it's coming out, uh, two administrators are really anxious, and they wanna see their data and start the planning process, so. The school, which is closing, uh, about a little over a week ago, we've already started the planning process for next year, so. Um, and I'm just really inspired by how those are admin are to jump back into school planning pro, uh, cycle, so it's really great, but we're really lucky, yeah, the infrastructure leaders that we have. Um, one thing that's really cool, and a little different this year, is athletics, uh, in the district are still going really strong. Uh, we have youth baseball still using our facilities, we have volleyball, uh, going strong, basketball going strong. Uh, football is, is three days a week, so it's really cool to see that, you know, it was a tough, uh, reentry into the C-WAC, but, uh, we weren't necessarily defeated, and, and the kids are showing up and responding. Uh, in the summertime, we have a group of six wrestlers at a really, uh, my son included, a really intensive wrestling camp this week, so they're going hard, um, and it's just great that our kids are staying active in the summertime, um, which always makes me really happy. Um, this is the last full week for admin, the last day is the thirtieth, and then we're gone all of July. Um, I do want to recognize April Murray, so April Murray is an English teacher at Quincy High School. She was recognized as the Eastern Washington College and the High School Teacher of the Year. So out of all of the, you know, partnerships that Eastern has college and high school with, which are a bunch, including the bulk and Spokane region, she was, uh, selected as the Teacher of the Year, so congratulations. April, if you're out there, she's just an amazing teacher, I mean, you poll, you know, uh, graduates, and I would say ninety percent have said April had some kind of positive impact on their life. So she is an admin advisor, is an English teacher, um, she's just an amazing teacher, so I'm very lucky to have her in the district. Um, we also have a board retreat coming up on the twenty-ninth, uh, location, we're still trying to figure out where to have that. Um, we could have it here, but that does feel very retreat-like, so we are gonna do a kind of session on the seventh, we can spitfire some ideas of where we wanna have it, um, we do have a board, regular board meeting that day at one o'clock here, and so we could still have the setup for a regular board meeting and have the retreat in a different location that maybe is a little bit less warm, so. Um, let Deanna or Chad know if you have any suggestions of where you'd like to host the board, or the board retreat. And then the survey, board survey will be going out around, uh, July seventh for you guys to complete. It's, it's a pretty extensive self-assessment on how you feel that we're doing for the kids are going to others' board, so look for that. And then just again, uh, congrats to our seniors. A more thing, sorry. Safety net, I went through more with safety net, it's when we put money to the state, try to recoup some of the special education money, uh, that we, um, spent on some high-end students and high-end services this year. Sunshine put, uh, together a pretty substantial amount to the district, uh, to the, to. Sunshine put uh together a pretty substantial amount to the district, uh, to the, to OSPI. And I, and I was a little pessimistic if the full amount would be accepted and the full amount was accepted. Once I have that firm number, I'll be sure to uh include that as in an update to the board. But I just want to thank Sunshine for her work to recoup a substantial amount of funds uh for the district. So really good news. That's all I have?
Thank you. And next is our student board reps.
Well, we have I don't. I think yeah.
Yoli, where, you want to share with him where, where you're going?
I'm going into St. Oregon.
What will you start?
Uh, psychology and neuroscience.
Okay, nice. Neuroscience is an easy one.
Yeah.
When will you start?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, but I think it's the beginning of September. Like we were waiting there till August to start. Like we're over there. Thank you.
There's Ilio, do you have any plans yet?
Uh, Big Ben, just to get my general education done. It's right on looking at either.
Good.
Keep pushing.
Yeah.
Any update?
Just work, right?
Yeah.
Very cool. Well, we're so grateful that you guys are here uh for board leadership. Nick already said like the retreat stuff, so we're not going to bore you all with that. Uh, and then most importantly, we want to take this time to recognize and honor our student board reps. It is a role that is completely volunteer like us. Um, I think the difference is you guys aren't getting paid to do your schoolwork. And so you're not just super high achieving students, you guys are highly involved in the school. And I think it's a part of us to recognize that we really didn't um find ourselves very fortunate to have the representatives that we have here at this table. It's not a small role and we do appreciate and we hope to improve every single day. Um, but that said, we do want to honor, recognize uh our two graduating uh student board reps, who this is officially their last day. And no more.
Stand up if you're holding.
Your house, get pictures. So we have Yohanna Lee and Ilio.
Do you see any changes around here?
Sure.
You guys take a photo?
Just like we're going right out, okay? Yes. In the background?
Thank you both so much. So much.
Picture time. Oh, you have to. Even without.
Do you have an eye felt?
She's thinking, I'm so glad I volunteered. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Took to your commitment, so.
Yes, we have two more. Yeah, um, I will put those names out again in the update. Yep, two great ones.
Very cool. Well, thank you to everyone who brought in reports. Uh, moving on, now we have our policy review and adoption is. Anyone ready to motion?
I made motion to adopt policy.
Voted two oh six and fifty twelve, second.
Uh, are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, I opened the floor for a vote. All in favor, say a.
I'm gonna ask the.
She did.
Yeah, with my eyes, sorry. Yeah. Sorry, did I off the eye?
Alright.
So lotion passes. So there is no unfinished business, no new business. Uh, are there any requests from the board, student reps for future agenda items? The retreat is gonna be probably a real surprise. Get a lot of more.
Hash it out.
Yeah. So now we're moving on to um the executive session. So I want to give everyone this year, thank you, and closing, you guys.
You guys get to vote too.